I'll rise for the political weekend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I don't think it's working. You never know in this room. So just real quickly, I just, in terms of my updates, I would like to highlight that the budget referendum is being held on May 14th. We held a public hearing last week. We had a lot of questions that I know the public had, it was two weeks ago, I guess. And those, the answers to those questions are available online. You'll go down and see like a button you can click on that takes you to the budget referendum section. There'll be questions of all the questions, or answers to all the questions that were posed at the public hearing, as well as links to relevant documents. So we wanted to get that out there. So May 14th is election day, but you can actually vote absentee ballot for the budget referendum, and those ballots are now available in the town clerk's office. So please go to the town clerk's portion of the website to find out more about the process to submit an absentee ballot. The other thing I want to mention is, oh, and did want to highlight too, that just as a reminder, town officials, elected officials, cannot be advocating for the budget once we call the referendum. And so that's why the public might wonder why we're not, we can give facts and information and obviously advocate to vote because it's important to vote. But we can do so privately, but in terms of using town resources, we can't advocate necessarily for the budget. So just wanted to highlight that. The third thing I wanted to mention was that there had been, we've all had some conversations, both at our last couple of meetings, we had a very engaged public and a lot of discussion about what the appropriate conduct and rules are for our meeting during public comment. And I think it raised a lot of interesting issues about, you know, do you have to give your name and address? Do you have to, so it's really, I think, a board policy discussion that might be worth doing, where we could post it, you know, somewhere so people understand what the code of conduct is or what our process and policy is for handling questions from the public. And so I thought I'd put that on a future agenda, maybe in May, and we can talk about how we would want to like, you know, just spell it out more simply so there's no confusion or expectations different than what, how we conduct our meetings.
I think that's a great idea. And I think in an age where the agendas are published electronically, attaching the process.
That's a good idea.
So that it's available for every.
Just down here.
Yeah, yeah. And even like we have a Zoom link, you know, there could be a, you know, rules for public comment.
Right header.
Belt and suspenders, but I think part of the frustration is people come in thinking it's one thing, it's really another thing. And I think we've learned some stuff in doing like research, like you're only supposed to be able to talk about what's on the agenda. I think I've always said for the last eight, nine years, come in and speak your mind about anything. It's, you know, it's your opportunity to say whatever you want to say. And in reality, FOIA says, no, timeout. It's what's on the agenda is what public comment is supposed to be about.
And I think we can decide how we want to manage that, when we want to respond, you know, and I think lay out some of the ground rules for that. And I also think people use the term town meeting loosely, right? So sometimes a public hearing is very different than from a formal town meeting where we're having voting or a board of selection meeting or a board of finance meeting. So trying to like make sure that, you know, there's, people understand that it's very different in terms of what's the purpose of the meeting is and what is conducted at the meeting.
Right. Peggy, would these rules apply to all boards and commissions or just this one?
I mean, it's a fair question. I think we start with us. And then, you know, sometimes we can make suggestions to maybe each chair, because I feel they know their boards, they know their audience, they know their regulations and things that they have to follow. Maybe we have like a recommendation of conduct or policy, but you can adopt your own, particularly those boards that get a lot of public engagement. So.
Like P and Z. So a lot of head nods to the audience.
And I think that they actually do a great job at that because it's very regulatory in nature of when people can talk. Like we're not in that same zone necessarily. So I think it would be good conversation. And then if we could set up something that we think is best practice, maybe. And then other boards could adopt it if they wanted to adopt it. So that was just part of my comment because Scott and I had talked about it, and I didn't put it on tonight, but I think I'll probably put it on for May, so we can kind, and something kind of less for work through to talk about.
I'm pretty sure all five of us are going to be in final agreement on this. It's going to help building structures, meeting and just laying the ground. So.
Well, I think it helps. Yeah. I think that you need structure and you need respect, right? But we also don't want to disappoint people too, right? And feel like they're not being hurt. So it's trying to find that good balance where people are feeling they're being hurt, but we're doing it in an orderly way and respectful way.
And I'm usually cool with, you know, to your point of like off agenda comment, as long as it's a comment, we're not expecting the answer that night or that immediate, you know, during the comment, I'm okay with that. But maybe two, three minutes. I mean, I think there's a conversation we have to.
And all of those are on the table, right? The duration of the public comment period during the meeting. You know, each speaker, the number of times at the microphone.
Right?
Yeah, we've seen that recently, right? For sure.
So I don't think any of it is intended to stifle any voice. Ideally, we would, if people would come in with a clear idea of what it is they want to say.
Maybe organize, which I think is a smart thing.
So I think, I think a little structure works, works well for everybody. And of course, we always reserve the right to be flexible.
And other towns do have this. So we've started looking a little bit at what some other towns might have as a best practice. So it's not, we're starting from scratch. No one's ever thought of this before. We just never felt really a need, but I do think with more engagement, it's important to have some ground rules.
Especially with the bigger projects going on too, I think it's important for us to have the ground rules at these meetings because we do have a number of items on our agendas that we need to get through. But I do think it's also important that maybe we offer, if there's a big project going on, some public information sessions throughout the course. I know that was really important. On specific to that project, I know it was really important with the school project that we had those because then it does give folks the opportunity to have that little bit of that.
And we did that for Academy.
Yeah.
And even just the budget.
Yep, just continuing to have those and publicize those. But yeah, we need to make sure we stay on task with the agendas.
Okay. So that is my update and any other ideas or reports or thoughts?
I have a couple. I'll be quick. Okay. So Affordable Housing Committee, they.
Handwritten, two point five.
The Affordable Housing Committee, they are going to do another community conversation in May. Date is pending on that, but they're planning on doing it at the Senior Center. Senior Commission, we are having the Cafe Grand reopening on Thursday, May 16th at noon. And if anybody would like to attend that, RSVPs need to be in by May 13th.
What was the date?
May 16th is the reopening celebration and RSVP by the 13th.
I just, I just.
Also, for the budget referendum, the Senior Center does have the Dial-A-Ride program and bus service. If anybody needs help getting to the polls, we just ask that you make sure that you schedule that as soon as possible so that they can plan all of their routes. And then Austin, since you're here, you get the in-person thank you for the quick work over on the soccer fields at Salt Meadow. I got a notification from a coach. There was a hole, probably a dog hole in Austin, and his team was right on it. And same with John Eineko and Public Works for the craters that were in the parking lot. I think within 30 minutes of sending that email, his team was out there regrading and filling in those holes. So.
What field was that?
Uh, Salt Meadow.
Salt Meadow.
Yep. So thank you guys for all the work on that.
Too, right? Yeah.
Yeah. And then one last thank you to Fred Muser. I know. Is it Muser? Fred Muser? A lot of folks in town know Fred. And so about five years ago, he alerted John Michael Parker to the lack of a memorial up at the Capitol that was dedicated to our Vietnam War veterans. So under Fred's leadership, they tracked down 616 names, raised over $8,000. And just on the 17th of this month, they unveiled three plaques up at the Capitol that have the names, hometowns and branches of service for those service members that, you know, gave their greatest sacrifice for others. And Fred did that all along with the help of John Michael Parker and the other members of our American Legion Griswold Post 79. So just want to thank Fred for all of his leadership on that project.
Yeah, it's great. I know, he's talked about it for so long.
Yes, he has.
And so I know we're thrilled to see that be successful. It was the only veterans group that hadn't then recognized all the other, you know, conflicts of their war memorials. So that was right, a great accomplishment. Any other updates or?
I, so I just want to really, I had a really good conversation with the resident about the beach passes and Garvin Point. And the idea that we were only going to be under the state grant restrictions for a year. And, and I explained that, that unfortunately, the project was delayed. So when we said all of that, we thought it was going to be this last winter and it would all be done by now. And it's just been delayed. And so if people understood it to be a fixed one-year period, apologies, it was really the duration of the project, which we expected to only be one year. Of course, we had to redesign the system and, and all of that. But in the course of that, I did some investigations and Fairfield has a great policy around parking permits. And I would commend to us as we think about what our policy is going to be moving forward post grant restrictions, that Fairfield would be one of the towns we look at for, for guidance and, and just outright plagiarism.
Well, the whole, you know, kind of kind of in the previous meeting, we're going to do a review again of everything, right? So I think that's fair. That's, that's good to do. Anything else? Al, any updates? No? Good. Okay, great. All right. With that then, citizens comments. Raquel, do we have any hands raised for citizens comments? And a reminder that there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting if you want to ask a question or should say make a comment as well.
Um, no, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you, Raquel. All right. Moving on to item number six, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to item number seven is, and I'll, Raquel, if you could invite up, I know Dr. Cook is here, and I'm not sure if there's members of the Board of Education on this matter, but this doesn't take action to approve a request by the Board of Education to return $226,541 in 2022, 2023 funds to the Special Education External Placement Reserve Fund and authorizing for use to cover an unanticipated cost in the current fiscal year pending Board of Finance approval.
So move.
That count?
Okay. So this is, our board members received a memo outlining this. And this is some, one of the reasons we have this fund set up is because this has happened occasionally where something much larger happens with special education, which can have some very large, lumpy, unpredictable costs. And so we typically allow the Board of Education to do this with funds because every year they usually return some funds back to the town. But I'll let Dr. Cook talk a minute about this and answer any questions.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lyons. The, the board received the memo that we provided you. We had some unanticipated costs, mostly related to legislative action that occurred after our budget was submitted and approved last year. And so there were additional costs for our 18 to 22-year-old program. And then also we've experienced some additional outplace costs this year. And so what we would ask is that the funds we returned to the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance in, probably was around, you know, October timeframe by the time everything was, was worked out and, and returned, that that be put back into our special ed fund for immediate use in, in those areas that I described.
Any additional questions? I know this is, do you know when the last time we did this kind of transaction? Because I know we've had to do this in the past. I just don't remember how long ago it was.
A year ago, we, you returned funds to us to pay for the armed security. So it's similar to that type of request in that it's money that we returned to the town that then is returned to us for, for use immediately. What's different about this one is that it's special ed and we do have that reserve fund. It typically runs around $350,000. We really try not to touch that because $350,000 could reflect, you know, two students that maybe moved into town that were unanticipated. You know, especially at outplacement costs have a tendency to be pretty, pretty fluid and volatile. And so, you know, we would still be able to, through this action, our intent is to leave it still at 350 at the end of this year. But this would, would help with a gap we have in that, that budget right now.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a good thing. We're fortunate that we have the funds to handle this, you know, because sometimes this could be a big budget buster for them, right? So we're grateful. No further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So then I'll go on to the Board of Finance people. The next item on the agenda, item number eight, is an update from the Chair and Vice Chair of our Planning and Planning and Zoning Commission on the Plan of Conservation Development and Discussion of the Draft Document. So we did get the draft and fully confess, I did a quick screw. I'm not ready to provide comments, but it is an incredible piece of work and it's very well written. I love your intro letter.
Thank you.
So, but I thought it'd be helpful to talk about the process and then we could figure out how we can give you some of our feedback more formally, you know.
Sure.
You know, once you've gone through the document.
Right. So yeah, here it is. We're very proud of it. Hundred pages.
Whoa.
I don't know how that happened, but.
Like that topic.
Yeah. A nice number. And I thought what I'd do, so this is Bob Reinhardt, who's our Vice Chair now and has been integral in the process and especially in getting us to the, to the finish line with it so far, right? And I thought what I'd do though is give a quick review of, of the process and where we've been. And, you know, I've been here a couple of times before to share with you and then what we've done since our last, the last time I presented to you, to the board. And then talk a little bit, if you have any questions about sort of the implementation part of it is what's most important at this point. And we didn't have that last time we came here. So, so that's key. So yeah, we started the process in September 2022, which seems like about a century ago. I then came to the Board of Selectmen in March 2023, just to let you know how we were proceeding and what we had done so far. We were back again in January 2024 to give you an update. And at that point, we had moved really quite well, far along and coordinating with you all too, with the strategic planning so that they're, they're compatible and consistent. And, and that was really helpful for us, I must say, to get that feedback and all the information that we did through this strategic plan. In the process, we have, we, we learned that our themes, our main themes, which were vitality and connectivity, resilience and sustainability, opportunity and growth, which we paired, became our goals. And actually, this is when our Vice Chair, Bob Reinhardt, came on board and wanted to kind of hone it down, you know, distill it, you know, we had a lot of, we were sort of information gathering for a long part. And then it was, it was important to reduce it to something that was really impactful. So out of that process, we established seven policies for Madison, and I'm going to turn it over to Bob if that's okay. Talk about that process of using a matrix to, you know, all the different things we had gathered for the natural environment and the built environment, using those themes, then became goals, policies and actions. So can you explain that a bit?
So I'm not sure how much you all have seen or familiar with what we've come up with so far. And I'm not sure what you've seen and what's new in this document. But the, what Carol's talking about is we took those dual themes at the beginning and broke them down into three goals, which are very specific. And those are on page 50, if you haven't seen those before. But basically it's just a rephrasing of the, of the dual tracks that we had before, but a little more succinct, I think, and, and specific that would then allow us to build the, the policies and the actions that follow. Next thing we did is we broke down, instead of doing a built and natural environment concept of, here's a built environment, here's what we knew about that, we said, that's just background. And the reality is it's built, built environment, natural environment and human environment. Is that the SCROG one?
Yeah, that's the original one. Yeah.
So the human one is kind of, it's the only reason to have it is the environment. But that's, so we just took those three as well and basically informed the development of the policies. So I'm not sure the policies have changed much. There are seven. They're on page 51. They, we continued to try to tighten them up to be as, there's, they're aspirational, but at the same point, they have enough detail in them or enough to it so you can start developing the, the goals around them and on these things. So we went through those and then for each of those, we developed goals. So to, if you think of the policies as a strategy for attaining the three goals that we set forward, then underneath that are sub-goals to help you implement the strategy. So each of them has between, I don't know, three, five, six different sub-goals. That's where the rubber's going to hit the road. That's what we take in the implementation plan and assign it to an entity. So every goal will have a group saying, this is yours, you have to do it.
So yeah, there are seven policies. There are 28 sort of action items. Yeah.
And that'll be in the implementation plan. We'll look at that real quick. And then underneath those, we started balancing out the, excuse me. Beautiful weather, but bad for allergies.
Apologies.
So in each of the policies, then we have those, those goals. And each goal, we started putting a specific task that we wanted the, the entity who owned the goal to achieve. And we realized quickly that we were getting very specific. And we're getting it to be a, being a bit of a micromanager situation. So instead, what we decided was each of the policies has those goals. The goals are laid out, we'll give it to someone, say, this is your job, and please make sure you consider the following. So in each, each of those is a couple that we thought were very important. So in the policy A, create an accessible community that fosters easy connections, the rest. The goal one is create a downtown development plan to include the entire downtown village district. That's the goal. But then we had three subtasks that we said, you have to consider this. And so the first one was balancing commercial and residential requirements. So the idea is that we can assign the, creating a downtown development plan to someone and say, you have to consider commercial and residential. It must be addressed. You can't just pretend it's not. You can say, I did, we didn't do anything, but you have to consider. We did that for everyone, just to give them a more, call it a commentary source, just to kind of get things going in the right direction. So there's multiple pages of this, if you have any.
Yeah. Well, also I just wanted to say again, there's a lead entity, and then we realized there are partner entities. And that's really important. And, and that was important in how we structured this. And this is how actually the Board of Selectmen ended up being a lead entity on 10 of our.
Yeah, we have a request.
Items. And that's what actually.
Waiting for the bunch.
We would really appreciate when you get a chance to read through it all and see the, you know, get to the implementation table and see, you know, what we've tasked you all to do. See if it makes sense. If you want to, you know, push back, give us feedback, whatever. Have a larger conversation, just focusing on that. That might make sense too in the future, if you feel comfortable doing that.
And if you go to page 60, where the implementation plan, everything is there, the goals are there, then the policy is there. And each of the sub-goals for each policy are there as well. So now we have a slight disagreement on the commission with respect to the Board of Selectmen being lead entities. I don't think you should be. I think you're the executive branch in charge of making sure it happens and not doing it. So the request is either to accept this, your assignment as a lead entity, or tell us who you want to assign it to.
I normally think the Board of Finance.
That might not be.
I mean, you know, we, we struggled with it and it's actually, it's, it's been really, I think, really productive to have that kind of conversation of like, how do we do this?
I'm looking through these.
Can you pick one of these policies that you did have discussion around and what were the alternate ideas?
Sure. I mean, we can even start, they're 10. Because they're 10, I wrote them down.
Did you have the alternates?
For the preparation. No, I don't have alternatives, but, but let's just give you an example of like the first policy A, to create a multimodal transportation master plan. And I think, you know, our thinking is that you all oversee the big picture, the budget, you know, what government can do. And so, correct me or add to this, please, but, you know, that's how we were thinking. Well, this could be the Board of Selectmen then because they have the resources and the access and the knowledge to deal with this kind of big, big project.
Right. I disagree.
That's why Bob's here.
There's no commission or committee that's, that could be assigned to this right now. You have to.
And, and I think that's why, that's why the Board of Selectmen is the right entity. Because what we do routinely is create ad hoc committees that are delegations.
Take it on and delegate the responsibility.
Right. So we, so we routinely delegate task-oriented things. And so if the, if the parent responsibility lies with us, we can then delegate as we see fit.
Ad hoc committee and tell them it's their job.
So yeah, I mean, again, in the strategic plan, there was, you know, there was discussion about restructuring some of the commissions and ad hoc committees and cleaning, cleaning house, I would say, in terms of all of those groups. And, you know, then we're throwing out these policies that combine and recombine and shift and, you know, look at things slightly differently than what we, we've done in the past. So it would be, you know, it would be great to have you coordinate and create commissions or committees or ad hoc or whatever. It makes sense.
An ad hoc committee that you created.
Rid of something too. If there's some that retire.
Yeah.
Well, and note that town staff is on all of them. That's also, you know, a challenge that we always face because of the.
Debt by committees?
Yes. Because it's, it's there, you know, they're not paid extra to be sitting in all these night meetings, you know. So it is kind of a challenge. And then there's the administrative piece of it we were just talking about. You know, we're stretched on getting people the minutes and then run hybrid meetings. And, you know, there are a lot of people in attendance. And, and then finding hybrid meeting spaces because we're getting crunched now. Everybody wants to do hybrid and we don't have a lot of resources. So that's not to distract from what you're saying, but I get, I think this is good because it opens the conversation up. Because I've struggled with it too. Like where does this land? Who's going to do it?
And how do you actually implement?
Yeah. And we're kind of wrestling with this in the strategic plan. And I owe the board here a follow-up on that because we had started an implementation plan that we're struggling with. I have some solutions that are probably won't kick in until July 4th, not July 4th, July 1st with the new budget. You know, who's going to kind of shepherd a lot of that stuff? Because you also need somebody to coordinate all this also.
Yeah.
So, but I like the way this is laid out. And I have to compliment you on the, the goals I thought were well-written and better written than some of our strategic plan goals. Because then we struggle with things, words, and, but this is, I think, it's well-written. I don't know if it was the good writer in the group, but maybe it's Tyke, but I thought you did a good job with some of it.
Well, I think, yeah, we gave, we gave Tyke sort of the raw material and then, and then John Kaskowski cleaned it and his team cleaned it up for us.
Good. So, but some of this, I thought, that sounds so much better than what we had in the strategic plan.
I mean, you know, just to back up a little for a second too, remember that from planning and zoning perspective, you know, our zoning regulations and our maps are a comprehensive plan and the Plan of Conservation and Development is our master plan, how we think of it. And that's different from the strategic plan. So, you know, again, I don't think, Peggy, you should be comparing too much or feeling that, you know.
Well, but these are overlapping, like transportation. That was the highlighted thing in the strategic plan.
No, the strategic plan maps to this.
Yeah.
There's no gaps other than things that we don't care about.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, which is great.
So.
Having that to the SCROG and the state.
Yeah.
So I have some, some thoughts on bandwidth. I like that you've made the effort to put a priority next to everything.
We argued about that.
One of the, one of the organizational dilemmas in assigning priority is that everything becomes urgent. And, and then what value is that label, right? The, the high versus the low. So everything can't be high.
Right.
And you almost have to be arbitrary and say, sort of like grading on the curve. You can have one high, two moderates and three lower.
Force, force dissonance.
Right?
You're slow in the end. Yeah.
But the other, the other way I would, would love to see you look at this is the lead entity and the prioritization that they've got. And if you've got one lead entity with five high priority projects. And if you've got one lead entity with five high priority projects, you're very likely going to overwhelm them. And so that might be a second filter. Well, but, but any, any volunteer organization in town, which is virtually all of these. I think to be sensitive to the number of high priorities that any lead entity has and maybe come up with some sort of admittedly arbitrary cap on what that is.
What about the idea of just not having priorities?
I, I like the idea of having priorities because it, it's, 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 it's you guys saying, these are the things that should be paid attention to first. So.
And if there are twenty-eight action items, I can't imagine like twenty-eight can be all worked at the same time too.
Well, that's why, that's why I said this is a bandwidth.
Some are sequential in fact, where you have to start with a master plan and then work, work it out. I don't know if you remember that when I first talked to you about the previous, the two thousand thirteen Plan of Conservation and Development, there were over a hundred. Action items and only, you know, by our count, only really about thirteen got done. Some are in progress, so we, that's, that's not including some others. So when we looked at it, we thought, okay, we, we don't want that many. We want to narrow it down as much as we can. So, yeah, so within twenty-eight, we have prioritized high and moderate.
I think, I think it's good to do that. And I think it's, uh, what we, we should review that and, you know, and say, well, if we're unanimously saying that is a low priority for the board. You have to decide to reflect that, right? Cause some of the stuff is going to be in your house, right? Your own houses as a commission.
Yep.
And we want to know if there's going to be conflict with that, right? If somehow, you know.
Conflict for town resources.
Yeah, right. Well, yeah. So I think it would be good to know what you think the priorities are. And are for your commission and for the town and then, um, and then we can kind of weigh in on that.
You can always call it tier one, tier two, tier three, if you wanted to get away from the, the priority language.
Yeah, it's more a wave as opposed to how, how certain you get them done or how quickly you get them done.
Right.
Maybe all of them need to get done.
Well, I think that their existence on here speaks to a need to get them done. It's a question of the, the, the reality of phasing and sequencing that, that has to happen. We're not an unlimited resource organization, so.
Right, but we don't want to be in a position of the hundred action items and thirteen get done in ten years. Okay, so we're pretty lame, so.
I mean, also keep in mind that we do think of this as a living document and priorities may change and new things may appear that we didn't anticipate. Uh, like a pandemic.
You could do like a, however you tier high, I mean, but you say each policy has one number one. And then number two and everything else is.
So to my way of thinking, you just be very cold and calculating and say, in this group, you know, in a group, there's only one high priority.
Exactly.
And then, you know, and then two. Level twos and then the rest of them are all level threes. It forces some really hard, critical thinking about what is in there. And, and to put them at tier three within the group doesn't mean they're not important.
Right.
But it just means that if, if we have to do something in sequence, that this one's gonna come first.
It's kind of like the strategic planning process, you know, remember the sticky notes on the. Everybody that attended that, all of a sudden had to pick three priorities and like put a sticky note on the topic. And that's all of a sudden you saw this flood and then the other one maybe just had a couple, you know?
So you kind of, you kind of want to, also if you want to take a whack at the implementation table and, and put those numbers in there.
Yeah.
As you see these issues and actions.
I just, you guys are so much more intimate with the document and the, and the, the logic behind their existence in here. I think ours would be really arbitrary. And uninformed.
Well, but I, but I think it would be helpful, you know, I think it would be good for us to have an opportunity to give you direct, like more specific comments, right? So that we've read this now thoroughly and, um, and.
Maybe agree on the number ones too.
Or maybe, yeah, maybe we could at least, you know, come in with some thoughts on it, you know? And I'm just trying to, I'm thinking, do we do kind of a work session maybe? It, it doesn't have to be with the whole commission, maybe where we can just kind of work with you.
Even just the two of you.
And, you know, and you're kind of just listening to our thoughts and you incorporate.
Arguing from.
It's fantastic.
Well, and I think, I think we did, like, we, you know, strategic plan and I think the charter, that was something where the commission. You know, we had the opportunity to do it page by page, right? And, and just kind of not, not wordsmith, but more just provide perspective, like, you know. You could carve out an hour and just call it like a work, work session or something. It's still a public meeting, but not like formal and, you know.
Yeah, exactly. So, just also, so you know, this is like this latest draft that you just received last week, I think, is what we're calling the public hearing draft. So that we're really not going to touch it till the public hearing happens on July eleven. We can take lots of comments, feedback and, you know, make notes and, and toward changing it. Again, once we get public feedback normally.
So you think maybe after the public hearing, would we better have that work session or would you want it before?
Whatever you all are comfortable with, it doesn't matter.
I think we do it before, cause we'll just take it as part of the feedback.
Right.
I mean, right, I promise not to read it anymore because I kept changing them. Even though, it's like I still ask that I want to tweet, but I want to hear back. More than just us.
Well, and maybe for us, it might be good to hear the feedback first too, before we.
Yeah, that's generally works.
Yeah. I mean, we've sent it to all the stakeholders who were listed in the appendix, I think, and sent it all, to all of them too. And we're starting to get some feedback, even, you know, individual feedback, you know, we're just collecting it at this point. But we can't make a change to the document.
Right.
Until after the public hearing. Then it goes back before you all for final approval.
So maybe we wait till after that, cause then that, there's an interim part after that and you'll have our feedback after the public hearing.
Cause then we can digest the public feedback.
Yeah, and then we have one last, you know, go around when it is pretty much finalized. So, okay, so we'll plan on after July eleven, the public hearing.
I had one final comment. Um, I think there's another partner entity that we can lean on more heavily here. That's the land trust. I notice you, uh, they're included under the inventory of policy B. But I think when it comes to open space planning or land acquisition. They could be a major partner entity on that. And so I think some direct conversations with them may help fill out. Policies and goals and how to implement them. It's a real resource that we should leave.
Yeah, yeah.
I could touch, basically on the, the idea of the ad hoc committees to take the place of the, the board. It might be as simple as just looking at who the partner entities are and taking the leadership of three or four of them and saying, you're the head committee. And saying, you've got it. So come up with a fancy name or something, but then at least they've got the resources to make it happen and have this sense of responsibility. Cause otherwise you, you all have to talk about each of these, you tend to these.
Yeah.
Every month for the next ten years. I'm gonna be.
That's a great, that's a, that's a great selling point.
Yes, um, no, but that, that's a great way to.
Lucky, I'm lucky.
Yeah, and I think, um, cause I look at like transportation, for example, you'd want to include the police department, you know, cause they have local area traffic authority and those types of things, so.
The challenge with the ad hocks though, the only, I, at least in our experience is you still require them to come back and, you know, provide the input or recommendations back to the selectmen. So we would still need to act at some point. So we're still in conversation and think about how many boards or commissions. So it's, it's a, something we need to think about.
Well, for example, I just picked transportation because that was the first one, but we would have to join, you know, the historic transit or valley transit. Just sort of steps that the board would require to take to, to, to do some of these measures, um, you know? So, um, the board will be involved in everything that comes out of this, I think, cause it's gonna, it's, it's a zoning regulation type of stuff, you know? Because if we would require ordinance, the board would be a bu, if they had a budget or a grant or a project, you know, so.
And put it into our planning, our C P.
Right, so, um. Okay, great. Well, you, I, you guys have made tremendous progress and we're excited to see how the public receives it. And then we'll be ready and after that, we'll schedule something to give some feedback directly to you. But I appreciate all the hard work and complimenting her too.
If you agree to, please criticize it as hard as you.
This is awful.
I, all, all I ask is to be constructive.
Be gentle.
You should have led with that.
Well, I will say, I tend to be a wordsmith there, but I remember the affordable housing plan, I didn't really feel the need to wordsmith and I'm not seeing a lot of more. And that's not, I'm just, I, I'm not necessarily the best, you know, communicator either, so, but I just tend to overanalyze words sometimes.
Not anything I did without thinking, I just had no feelings, just.
Yeah.
So what I'm asking is, don't hold back.
Yeah, and I think you'll get you, the public will certainly take you. Pick up that.
But that's an interesting point though. So. Again, the public needs to be informed about what this is, the, you know, sort of the time that we're at right now and the, in the input needed. And I guess, how do we market this to some extent? So we should surely get the feedback.
You know, like we did. We've had a lot of public feedback, we've had public, you know, we've had other stakeholder feedback.
Yeah.
I mean, they even helped, some people helped write it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and we have certain people who have been, who have been at many of our meetings and are, are happy with where we've landed. And, you know, to get their support after, after.
But I think the idea, I, I would say ninety percent of the people in Madison don't know what P O C D is. How to get that down lower, so at least they know what it is so they can.
Well, and maybe we put out some sort of educational tier as we lead up to the public hearing. Cause we can promote things, as you know, with strategic plan. We did get a lot of help to say, you know?
And is this draft available on? I checked and it was not on our, um, P O C D website.
Well, it was hot off the presses on Tuesday.
Yeah, last.
So last week.
So maybe like in a week, we start pushing out with the link. And then similar to the strategic plan, the little marketing program, like, hey, you should take a look at this. So is there an email? Do you have an email address?
Market calendar for the public.
Right.
But I think, but I think more than anything too, it's talking about, I think where you guys started, which was the synergies between the strategic plan and P O C D. So we don't perceive them as two separate documents, that they're integrated, that they're connected. I, I think that's really important.
Yeah, and I thought what was, when we had our hearing after we had a draft, there was a couple of things we just missed in it. We were like, yeah, what?
Yeah.
There were two things I remember were like, great point. It just never came up in any of our conversations with the public. I mean, we had seventy-five, eighty people at the, uh, public, uh.
Not the retreat, but the. But it was one of our public information sessions, I think it was. Yeah, and members of the public, you know, keen eye caught some really good stuff. And, uh, you know, this is so well organized, I think, you know, it's a lot of pages, but I think it's easy to break it down and read through a little bit at a time. You can also just click in the table of contacts and get right to the. Exactly, yeah. And, yeah, so I do think people are going to be interested in seeing this, especially since we just went through the strategic planning process. And like to Scott's point, you know, the more we can do to highlight how these mesh, these two documents mesh together. And they're not in combat with one another, but supportive of one another. And just, yeah, get it out there so people can read it.
Can I ask a rookie question? And I should note this after eight years on the Board of Selectmen, but. How often do we, like, I, I think the goal of the strategic plan, P O C D, et cetera, is not to put it on a table, right? So how often are we referencing this document when making rulings, et cetera?
Well, you know, in zoning, it's referenced at every meeting, I think, you know?
Awesome.
An application, an application tries to say how what they're proposing is supported by the previous P O C D, which is why we're also eager to get this one out. But yeah, that, I mean, from within planning and zoning, it's, it's very much part of our lifestyle.
And I think my applications, it's, it's a big deal for certain grant applications.
That's true. It says, oh, and it's supported and it's, you know, a priority in our P O C D. And I think with our new ad hoc facility committee as well, they just had their first meeting last week. What they're being charged with, there's so many pieces of this that I think they're going to be referencing from both our strategic plan and the P O C D.
That's a great point, yeah. I think we want to help, we want to leverage these resources as much as possible.
Well, and I think.
To your point of living and breathing.
Yeah, that kind of regular, you know, like in the budget, I tried to highlight things, how everything meshed with things that were, but we need to. Kind of put that in more common, uh, daily practice. So we'll, we'll get there. We're just gonna, it takes some time.
And yeah, our C I P committee, it'll be, you know, for us to be using this document.
And maybe they have to start assigning a category when they look at these projects.
Point to an action item or something, right?
Yeah, how does it relate? Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the, the two special exceptions before the commission right now, there's only, we only have two right now. Yeah, we've referenced heavily the current P O C D.
Oh, interesting.
And supporting their argument to get these special exceptions. So it is, it's an important document because it does set the course for a lot of development. In the town and how, we spoke to one of you times, you know, I look at it all the time when I get a request to see if the request fits. And if it fits, then it's good. So it's important. Perfect.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for coming tonight, so.
Yeah, thanks for everything. Thank you. Don't work too hard on it, Bob.
So moving on to, to item number nine, and I'm going to make an amended motion. I think you've got the memo about that. So to discuss and take action to approve awarding that contract for general conditions and fees of a million five hundred forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Plus pre-construction fees of a hundred and eleven, nine hundred dollars for construction management services of Port Paulson Auto Turn H V A C and generator project to Gilbane Company as recommended by Port Paulson Building Committee. Okay, okay, great. So, um, I don't know, do we have anybody here? Is, I can't remember. I don't think, was Bill gonna be on for this?
Bill isn't, but.
Oh, Peter's here, sorry, I didn't see him. Great. So, yeah, if you could just explain this for a minute, and we got the updated memo today that, you know, adding in the pre-constructions plus.
So, um, what we have is, you know, we have the, uh, the, the, uh, Paulson H V, HVAC pro, um, project along with the generator. So we, you know, we needed to contract a, 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 a construction management firm with the horsepower behind them to get this complicated project up and underway. So that's, that's what we actually have, have done and proposed to, and Gilbane was our winning bidder out of the, uh, out of the bid solicitation that we'd had about a month ago.
And I asked Billy, it's the low bidder too.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. And obviously excited to keep this moving forward. Um, and I know, uh, these are grant related projects and we're tracking everything appropriately and handling this, the, uh, uh, R F P process according to the grants, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great.
Peter, remind us, what, when will this start?
Once? This is twenty twenty-five.
And would it be over the summer?
It's gonna be a mul, a multi-year project because we're gonna be doing it with kids in the building.
Okay.
Which adds a whole nother level of complication.
Yes, it does.
And I, and I think we talked about, um, probably in another couple of months, um, the, uh, building committee and the facilities department will be able to come to us and talk about that timeline in more detail. Cause they're kind of working a lot of this out, you know? But they need to design it, you know, and, and, and figure out, you know, and then sequence it, so.
Tricky.
So I think I heard maybe June or July, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts on this. Yeah, it would probably be closer to the beginning of June, I think, is what the target date is gonna be.
Yeah, so we'll be hearing back from them hopefully in June, maybe, um, a kind of more of the sequencing and everything, so.
Fantastic.
Any, any further questions on item number nine?
That's just great to see this moving forward, so.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, all right, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
So moving on to item number ten is, um, I wanted, uh, we're gonna be voting on, um, the grant associ, or matching to a grant. But, uh, the update on the Concord Meadows Route One Sidewalk Project. And so I thought John could give an update on this, cause this is something that's been under work for a while. We're excited to move this, you know, see this moving forward. So this is basically from Comfort Meadows, um, which is on, um. Why am I going blank on the name of the road now? Woodland Road. So the sidewalk, we go from there, which is our, our largest affordable housing complex up to Route seventy-nine. And then from seventy-nine, all the way down to Route one. So now we'll have a completed sidewalk connecting with our Bradley Road sidewalk and with, um, our downtown sidewalk. So, um, and these, we had received two grants for this actually. One was a seed grant and one was a T O D grant. And, um, and there's been some full match associated with it. This has been on our list of matching requirements, so no surprises. Uh, but John, if you could just give, do you have a schematic of the project? Just so everybody can see it. It'd be nice for the public to see.
Um, I, I don't have that, no. I'm, I'm, I'm out of state and I'm on, I'm on my phone here, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I, I, I just anticipated this to be a, uh, basically what you said, an overall this, um, description. Um, yeah, so I, I, I just anticipated this to be a, uh, basically what you said, an overall dis-, um, description of what the project is.
Uh, so maybe we can offer to put on the web, a website, though, just somewhere, you know, the actual overview of the project.
Sure.
The sidewalks are going and stuff, because I think it's exciting that this is something.
Yeah.
It's gonna really change the connectivity downtown and a, and a safe place for people to walk now. Um, you know, especially if you go to the end of Bradley Road and there's no, you know, and then does this go down, um, uh, I, I just forget all the streets it touches.
It, so this, so you, right, you, you, you mentioned, so it's from Concord Meadows, so it will extend from the existing sidewalk on Woodland Road at Concord Meadows, uh, all the way out to Route seventy-nine. And then the sidewalk extends down Route seventy-nine along the, uh, westerly side of the highway, uh, all the way to Route one, so it'll connect to the existing sidewalk on Route one. And then there's a little spur that will, um, extend on Bradley Road to the west, to the existing sidewalk, um, near Academy Street.
Get Margaret's in there, yeah.
Yes, so, so there'll be connectivity from Bradley Road, from the east side of Bradley Road over to the west side. And it's, it's gonna, you know, sort of interconnect some of the existing sidewalk in that area.
And what is the timing of everything?
Um, so the timing, we, the following agenda items here, we, um, received five bids for construction and, uh, the, the low bidder, uh, bid amount was a little bit under the, um, project budgeted amount. So, um, if, if it get, if this gets approved tonight, um, the only other approval we're waiting for is from D O T to approve the award to the lowest responsible bidder, and we anticipate that within a week. And, um, the contractor is ready to go, so, um, I anticipate that this project will begin in, in a matter of a, a couple of weeks or a few weeks. And it'll take place during the summer. We've given them, um, that, they have until the fall, November of the fall to complete this, but I, I don't expect it to take that long. Um, hopefully, if, if all goes well and, you know, weather cooperates.
So, um, one important thing, because it will be a summer construction project, um, is, you know, make sure they understand some of the community activities that are gonna be going on this summer, and they're gonna have to think that through in terms of construction scheduling, just saying. Um, you know, with the parades, um, and, um, the Rotary Carnival is over behind, uh, in the Academy Fields and things like that, so you might want to give them those dates, you know, as they're doing their planning.
Closing, closing day of Little League.
Right, yes, that's, that's. That's a good idea, and we have, you know, we'll have a pre-construction meeting. We can go over those dates, key dates of any functions that are going on. And, you know, and there's a staging area. Fortunately, the town garage is nearby, near the beginning of the sidewalk project, so, uh, there'll be areas to leave equipment and stage materials and so forth, so it should work out pretty nicely.
Traffic on seventy-nine, do you think, a lot, or is it mostly off-road types of, you know, activity?
Um, there'll be, there'll be definitely traffic control required along, um, Route seventy-nine. The sidewalk is, is fairly well off the road, but you, you know, you need to have delivery trucks of, of material gravel and concrete. So, um, there, there's definitely, um, traffic control is a big component of the project.
Okay, well, obviously we want to get, we gotta get these things moving along with the price because of, so. Um, so maybe if there's no more questions, we can just go through the next two items, right?
Yeah, perfect.
So, um, item number eleven is discuss and take action to approve a special appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars for an municipal match of the state T O D grant relating to the Concord Meadows Route One Sidewalk Project and C I P, approved by the Board of Finance on four eighteen twenty-four.
So moved. So moved.
Okay, any further questions or comments? No?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item number twelve, discuss and take action to approve a contract with William M. Ladin Construction for construction of the Concord Meadows Route One Sidewalk Project pending the Connecticut Department of Transportation approval to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder and authorizing the first select one to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Okay, okay, any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, so we are in good shape for that, John, so move forward.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll try to put up some.
Thank you.
Duriels once we move forward on this, just so the public can look up and look at the map, you know, all that kind of stuff, so.
We'll put that on the website, yep.
Yeah, that would be good, because it is gonna be a busy time while this is gonna be going on, so, um, thank you.
Yes, all right, thank.
Okay, um, item number thirteen, um, is discuss and take action to accept the donation of the, uh, the, the, the property, uh, one point three nine acres on Cops Road, map sixty-five lot one, and authorizing the first select one to sign all contracts and documents associated with this donation pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
There now. And this came to us in the fall. Uh, we're very grateful for this donation that's out of an estate. Um, the property is adjacent to Bauer Park. Um, and, um, excited to just add this to the Bauer Park. Um, and so it went through planning and zoning, right? We sent it on for a referral there, which we're required to do, and now they've done all the documentation and everything, and we're ready to move forward.
There's no house on the property.
No.
No. Is it more wetlands then?
Yeah, a lot of wetlands. There's really, there's no, like, building possibilities on there. Just contiguous with Bauer Park.
It's a pond, right?
No trails or anything that we can add, or?
Not, not in that area.
Okay. Open space.
Any, uh, other questions about this?
No.
No? All right, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Uh, so we're excited to move that forward. Um, next item on the agenda is item number fourteen, discuss and take action to award a contract to Greenway Property Services Inc. for the renovation of the Exchange Field Complex in the amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in rock excavate excavation in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars per cubic yard funded through C I P and authorize the first select one to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award.
So moved.
Okay, and this is a, a very exciting project that we've been, we were very excited to move forward. Um, Exchange Field, it was in, so C I P, yeah. Um, so this will move quickly now, right? You're gonna get.
This will move quickly, so after this approval, we'll be able to award the contract to the bidder, and they will start, you know, almost immediately. And we, the plan is to have the field open by August first.
So moved.
Big football.
Wow.
Yeah, and the contractor is, uh, extremely confident that, um, they're able to complete it in our, our timeline.
Wow.
It's tight. It'll be working, you know, all through, really May through June, and then a growing four weeks for the sod. And then be ready to, ready to go.
Is that softball field that's there going offline during this?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And this is another, I know you've talked to all the leagues and everything, um, but we'll probably do some promotion to the public to know that this area is closed off, especially during the Fourth of July and all. Then it creates some issues for the, uh, fireworks. Yeah, because we can't do that exit route, you know, so we're working through all that because of this.
Austin, how will the appearance change, if at all?
Uh, you, from the naked eye, you won't know anything, except that it'll be a better playing field. Um, right now, on, on the football field that you see, there's a lot of ruts and humps and jumps that are in there. That will all be completely leveled out. Um, and then there'll be just irrigation, um, put on that field and, uh.
And more dust bowl.
Right, and then irrigation throughout the entire exchange field up to, um, where it turns into the Lowery Field by the, um, batting cage.
Oh, so we didn't on the soccer fields have irrigation in the past?
Uh, not in many years.
Wow, it wasn't working, so it wasn't operational?
Yeah, so this will, this will allow us to have irrigation, to irrigate the entire exchange field.
That's hilarious, yeah.
Wow. This is, this is a little bit off topic, but I notice, um, there are a lot of people, I say a lot. I see regularly people with their dogs off leash, um, on those fields. Um, I hope they're very, very diligent, um, in, um, in cleaning up after their animals.
No.
But, I mean, our kids are playing sports on these fields, contact sports.
Soccer, football, I mean, yeah.
On these fields, they're on the ground regularly. I don't know if there's something we need to do to, to do better at, at, at policing this or, or, or more public information, but.
Yeah.
There's a lot of spaces for people to take their dogs.
I think Salt Meadow's probably the same thing.
Right, so Salt Meadow, like Jen was saying earlier, that hole that was dug, that was on, that could not have been a dog. It was on a leash. Um, it was somebody off leash.
Yeah, it was on a soccer field.
Uh, Bauer Park, we run into people using the bags that we put out, but then throwing the bags into the woods and not using the trash receptacles out of there. It is, it, it's a problem everywhere. Uh, at Surf Club, we, because we're on site, you know, twelve, thirteen hours a day, we're able to, um, police it. Um, at the other sites, it's, it's difficult to do. We have signage everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, even if there was no signage, you really shouldn't let your dog, um, you know, do that kind of stuff on, on a playing field.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's difficult to police, and we, we run into issues all the time.
Is, is there an ordinance? I know there's a lease ordinance. I know that, that your, your dog's supposed to be on a leash. Is there an ordinance around puppy waste?
I don't believe so.
Scooping and scooping?
Yeah.
So, you know, we had looked like, I guess it was a year ago, at the beach and rec ordinances, remember? We looked at some of them for the facility. We never really did a follow-up after that. I think we got caught up in so many different things last year. Um, but that could be another item to add to that. We should revisit that, because we talked a lot about some of the ordinance, um, you know, ambiguity, smoking, you know, we talked about drinking of marijuana or, you know, being legal, not, and this year. So, we kind of had a bunch of conversations. I know we followed up with our town council a little bit, so, but maybe we add that and we kind of refresh that conversation. Because there's, they're ancient, you know, the, the ordinances for the beaches.
If we at least refresh them to current, but, I mean, the question is, you know, who polices this?
Well.
Is it, is it a sixteen-year-old kid working at eight? Is it a?
And I think that could easily be added to the leash ordinance, probably. That's a, a good place for that to live.
But does any lease ever get called for things like that?
Well, that can be issued by the, the, I thought the beach and rec, and then they can appeal it to the police department, can't you? For ordinances for parking.
I don't think we can, we can't take it.
I thought you did for parking and a beach pass. Uh, if somebody is parked there without a pass, how do you enforce that?
We don't, we don't let them do that anymore. You can't get through the gate without a pass, so we, we don't run into that anymore.
Okay. I mean, I know you can't get through, but so you've never had anybody where you, they kind of sneak in through, oh, I'm turning around, and then they don't.
Yeah, we have enough staff to make sure that.
Yeah, I know, they do love seeing that, too. Actually, I was just trying to think. Um, well, to be discussed. I think we'll look into this. It's, it's a fair point. I know it's been a problem, um, throughout town. I mean, people, a lot of people have dogs, particularly when you're dealing with a public facility that is used heavily by, uh, you know, kids, youth sports, stuff, um, you know, uh, and beaches, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the thing. It's, it's not just unhygienic, like somebody stepping on it and getting it on the shoe. These kids are sliding across the ground, they're getting cuts and scrapes, and now they're getting that biological matter inside their open wounds. And so it's, you know, if that was you or your kid and you had to deal with a situation like that with fecal matter, you would not be excited about it. So, you know, just pick it up.
Yeah, this is common sense and common courtesy.
Yeah.
I know, we can put as many ordinances together as we want, but it's just really, it really is about, you know, the public.
Well, so I, I, yeah, so admittedly, this is a bit of a tangent.
Yeah, okay, we have.
I mean, it's something we gotta talk about.
Well, I think the, the point, I think you raised a good point. Let's bring back the conversation, though, about some of the ordinances, because there are some things we learned to fix.
Just refresh, yeah.
Yeah, refresh it, exactly, that it was, there's some lack of clarity.
It's the Bauer Park Committee at our last meeting last week spent about a half an hour discussing it.
Um, yeah, okay.
It's a problem.
Um, so I think all in favor of approving item number fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Item number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve a revised round fourteen ARPA funding request for forty-nine thousand dollars for L E D portable lighting towers for Madison Youth Soccer, pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved, so moved.
So, this was one that had originally come to us a while back, um, and we were trying to figure out what we actually wanted and what the youth soccer wanted, and also the cost of it, and how much the town would be, will contribute. Was this gonna be something the town bought? Is this something that youth soccer? So, they were trying to figure out what they could contribute, right? So, now they've come back with this proposal, and maybe if we'll walk through there.
Sure, um, Raquel, Joe Giuliano from Madison Youth Soccer should be on, um, if we could promote him, please, and I'll just, as he's coming on, um. So, yeah, so the, the decision was made between youth soccer and, uh, my department that youth soccer would own them and take full responsibility of the maintenance, which takes that burden off of the town. Um, but, um, the town will still have access to them if needed for emergencies, special events, what have you. Um, but this, these lights will replace the ones that they rent every year that are, you know, loud, uh, diesel-generated, um, down on Exchange Field with, uh, an L E D, um, still generated with a generator, but with a gas generator that are much quieter, um, more efficient, um, and the lights are, are better quality. Um, so it's, it's a win for youth soccer and all the athletes that are involved with that, um.
Got to think it helps surrounding neighbors.
Great. So, can you guys hear me okay? It's Joe Giuliano. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, just to echo, and, and sorry I couldn't be there tonight. I'm actually just leaving Salt Meadow on the fields with, with, uh, coaching. But, uh, everything, uh, that was just said, that's, that's exactly it. It's, it's a lot more efficient, a lot cleaner, um, and we're not gonna.
He's fixing a bottle. We lost you, Jen.
Thank you, Verizon.
We're working on that.
Seven even the tower.
You saw in the.
Here for now.
And we gave, you'll see the, what they look like.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it's much different than the larger version that they currently rent, um.
Yeah, they're not like that big contraption, more like feet.
So, Austin, who would be using these and when?
So, Madison Youth Soccer, uh, would use them in the fall. Um, and then they agreed to allow the town to use it for emergencies, special events, Fourth of July, um. It, it's tough when, you know, there's the light, it gets dark out pretty early in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they, they need those lights on there, and, um, this will just be a better way to do that and a safer and better way for the, the athletes, soon athletes.
Who would be responsible for repairs and maintenance?
Madison Youth Soccer.
And where do they get stored?
So, Madison Youth Soccer has a storage facility on, I think it's Fort Path, Joe, and then.
Yeah, yep, I'm back if you guys can hear me. It is Fort Path, yes.
And then whatever they can't fit there, we'll find a spot for the one or two that won't fit.
Thanks.
And there was just general, when we talked about this, I think it was almost eighteen months ago now, um, you know, that we've done, we did a number of ARPA awards to youth athletic leagues, you know, to improve, because outdoor, as part of the spirit of COVID, was a lot of people, you know, um, uh, looking for outdoor operation activities and.
Looks like a dinosaur.
So, if there's any, any further discussion, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you.
I have a plan.
You know.
So, sorry about, sorry about the, uh, interruption. I appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's just another great partnership with the local youth sports organization and talent.
And they're, they're contributing a lot of money.
Yeah, to see what Little League did, now we do soccer.
Exactly, so, yeah, so it's a good partnership. Um, item number sixteen, discuss and take action to approve calling a special town meeting at Town Campus, Hammanes, Hammanes, Room C, on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, six P M. for the following purpose, to approve an application from Saltwater Property Group, L C, and Saltwater Property Group to L C under the Town of Madison Tax Incentive Assessment Deferral Program for an assessment deferral of no more than five years, approved by the Board of Selectmen on three twelve twenty-four and the Board of Finance on three eighteen twenty-four. So moved.
So moved.
So, this is just, uh, we were required for this to have a town meeting, and I, I tried to couple these a little bit, so we don't have to already have it separate, and it's before a board of selectmen meeting and then before another public hearing. Um, so any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. Um, item number seventeen, um, discuss and take action to call public hearing on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty P M. at Town Campus Room A on Zoom to hear comment on submissions of the twenty twenty-four D R S Neighborhood Assistant Act Tax Credit Program.
So moved.
So moved. And this is another thing that we're required as part of this grant application program, um, that is, if I recall, I don't know if Stacy's still on, but I think this was through, uh, the, uh, what's the name of the?
Is it Wellington?
Wellington, yeah, that's like, um, that they want to apply for this grant, and so we were just a facilitator for it. So, we're not accepting the grant, we're not taking the terms, we're just a facilitator, but the public, the public hearing is required for the grant application, so. So we're not accepting the grant, we're not taking the terms, we're just a facilitator, but the public, the public hearing is required for the grant application, so.
We, we've done this for Concord Meadows many times.
Yes, yes, yes.
As they've gone, it's sought money, we have to be the official.
That's right.
Organization, right?
Uh, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, well, moving on to citizens' comments, please raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment. I do not see any hands raised, I'm gonna call it once.
No hands raised.
Okay, great, yep, I'm calling twice, and with that, I guess, here's no objection, this meeting is adjourned.
Awesome.
All right, great. Thank you, thank you, Raquel.